Okay.
Okay, we are live. Thank you. It is October 28, 2025. It's just, well, that's still 6:00 PM. We are down here at the mill for a regular city council meeting. And with that, I'll go ahead and call me to order. Could you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and with that, could I please get a roll call?
Councilmember Dotteri?
Present.
Councilmember Petershagen?
Present.
Councilmember Donahue?
Present.
Councilmember Shipman?
Present.
Councilmember Jorstad online?
I'm here.
Councilmember Ewing?
Present.
Councilmember Hilt?
Here.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to approval of the agenda. So click on, I'm looking at you.
Yes, there's a couple modifications if we could tonight. If we could add a city department report to talk about a special council meeting next week, that would be great as item B. And then on the consent agenda, the last item, the Shannon and Wilson design contract for Lower Stevens Creek restoration project. You probably saw a couple emails from me this week because that contract was getting revised a couple of times. It's been revised a little bit more now. You've got the revised version in front of you tonight, but I think we just publicly want to like, for transparency, tell you what those last two revisions are. So if we can move that to an action item quickly, that would be great.
Okay, so just some.
Item F on the consent agenda.
Last, okay, so item F.
So that Shannon has an opportunity to talk.
Okay.
Thank you.
Move approve the agenda with this, with the consent agenda foxtrot going on to a consent, I'm not on an action item.
Okay.
Second.
Do we need to include the addition of the report in that as well?
Just a quick department report from Caitlin and I about a special meeting next week.
Okay, I assume that's in there as well. Also seconded, okay. Got a motion of second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we've got an agenda. Perfect. And my apologies, I should have turned that over to you, Councilmember Shipman. Okay, that takes us to item 5A. So we're going to introduce Morgan Matthews, Parks and Rec Office Assistant. So Sarah, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Good afternoon, Council. I have Morgan with me. She joined the Parks Department about six weeks ago. She is our office assistant and is sitting at the front counter for both Public Works and Parks now. She has a degree in community environment and planning from the University of Washington. Go Huskies. Her professional background includes project coordination in both residential and commercial construction, along with experience in interior design. While she has enjoyed her time in the field, Morgan has always aimed at returning to her roots of her education and working with the city of Lake Stevens has been a longstanding goal. She's originally from Texas and moved to Washington in 2016, which has become her home. She recently relocated to Lake Stevens from West Seattle at the end of past June, along with her husband, toddler, and two energetic Australian shepherds. On the weekends, you can usually find Morgan spending time with family and friends, whether that's exploring local parks or relaxing in her backyard with a good barbecue. Welcome, Morgan.
Okay, that moves us on to citizen comments, of which I see we have a few. Before I go to the green sheets, do we have anybody online?
I don't see anybody, but again, if you are online on our Zoom meeting, if you could raise your digital hand, I can let you into the meeting. And we do have one person. Let me bring him in.
While that's happening, I'll just take this opportunity to remind everyone. So these are public comments. We do listen to everyone. Just please know that we don't respond during these comments, but I can assure you that we are paying attention, taking notes, and we'll get back to you on anything as needed.
Yeah. Yes. Darren, can you hear us and can you unmute yourself?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you. You've got three minutes to address the council.
Yeah, I was just curious, this is for council. Do all the council members understand the traffic impact fees for commercial property? I can't see that, but is that a yes for everybody or a no?
This is not an opportunity where the council is going to respond back, but you can go ahead and finish your three minutes if you have anything else to say.
Yeah, because the traffic impact fees, when you guys get ready to do traffic impact fees, the fees are come from the residential, but they get put into a formula for commercial. And if you make them, if they get any higher, you won't get anything built on 20th. So that's, that's what I was, just wanted to know if they're educated on how the impact or the traffic impact fees are, and you might put a moratorium on the commercial side of it if you're going to raise the residential. But that's all I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else online? This is just the one. Okay, we'll go to the green sheets. First up, I have, I believe it's Ron Chase. Ron, please, you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Ron Chase. I am a lifetime, 50-year resident of Lake Stevens, full-time middle school teacher and small business owner in Old Downtown. The new little bookstore that you might have seen behind the construction down there. I'm here today because I'm extremely concerned about the commercial property development and permit process that's happening on the corner of 20th and Main Street that continues onto Hartford. I have spent the last three weeks trying to dissect the permits and to figure out exactly what they're trying to do and how that will impact our community. And the impacts are vast. And I've prepared a letter. It's quite extensive. I put it on, on paper because I know sometimes emails get a little daunting. I did send that to you as well. I'm not here as an anti-development person. My biggest concern is for the small businesses in downtown. These are independently owned, small businesses that are putting their livelihood into this community. And I'm concerned what large-scale development at this scale especially will do to those and what it'll do to our downtown corridor. I think there's an incredible opportunity for what can be built down here. And my feeling and the feeling of the people that I have contact with is that this is not it. I'll reserve a lot of what I have to say for hopes that you will review it in my letter. Specifically, I'd like to address the parking variance that's been filed for under this permit in which the developer is attempting to circumvent all of the parking requirements of downtown, not only asking for a 25% reduction, but then going further to ask for even a further reduction to a 0.6% stall per unit for single-family and for a 1.2. So cutting all of the requirements in half. My position, and I think the position of a lot of people, is we're already struggling for parking downtown. And we have a private developer coming in that is asking the burden of parking to fall upon the city rather than the, the development that's being put in. There is not ample parking for the building that they are trying to put in there. There's far too many units for that corner, and it will be a monstrosity in comparison to the businesses that are already here. I would ask that the parking variance be put in a state of at least pause, if not denial, to give an opportunity for public comment. I'm here to ask for this process to be opened to a public open comment period rather than a letter or email process. I'm asking for the parking variance to be put on pause and for the 25% reduction to be gone the other direction and for it to be a 25% in the other way. And we ask for 25% more parking to hit the maximum rather than the minimum.
Sorry, Ron, that's, that's three minutes.
Yeah. If you, if you wouldn't mind taking a look at what I had to write, and if you had any comments or any questions, I'd love to further the conversation. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, looks like a blank one slipped in here, so I think we only have one more. It's Brian Lewandowski. Thank you, Brian. You have three minutes.
Hey, good evening, Council. Appreciate it. Appreciate your time. I just came today to give a shout out from the Lake Stevens Rowing Club that had our awesome little regatta over the weekend. We had over 100 people in attendance there. We had over 30 boats that went out there in the torrential rain that was coming down over this weekend. Over, you know, about 70 participants, you know, support staff and volunteers. And this was a small event, right? But yet we had my gravel parking lot full. We had the entire boat launch packed with all these shells. Energy was high. People were having a good time. It was a, we called it the spooky scrimmage because, you know, it was kind of a smaller, you know, a tight-knit group of people. We did have a club from Bellingham that showed up. It was awesome. We had a chili cook-off, you know, 15 different chilis to cook from. Everybody piled into the boathouse and have a good old time out there. So it's, it's really cool that we live in such a vibrant community with a, with a council that cares about these kind of awesome clubs and, and a city that's easy to work with. The board's turning over, so I got to be a part of the permit procurement team over there with the rowing club. And so I got to work directly with Sarah and Tanya and her team. And even though we turned our stuff in late, they got it done on time for us. And so it was just a smooth process from start to finish. And so, yeah, I just wanted to say thank you again.
Thank you very much. Okay, that looks like it for public comment. Unless we've had anyone else pop up online. We're good. That takes us to council business, which I will now turn over to Councilmember Shipman.
Okay, we'll start online with Councilmember George Staff. Do you have anything?
Thank you. No, nothing tonight.
Okay, Councilmember Dotteri?
I attended Snoomish County Committee for Improved Transportation this morning where we're talking about the 2026 list of preferred alternative projects for transportation, which is basically the same as 2025 with a few numbers that have changed up and down on their budgets. So basically, what, what they're talking about is every project in Snoomish County, all of them, and what we need to do to pay for those and what we need to do to get them actually started. One of them is a trestle, of course, you know, put that on the background for a while, $1.6 billion. I was a little bit surprised when they brought the map up that everything was around Lake Stevens, nothing in Lake Stevens going on with, with WashDOT. So it's, yeah, that's it. I don't need to have to report on it anymore. Nothing in Lake Stevens. Hopefully, we can get some movement on the, on the trestle, though. And I don't know if anybody's seen, but they are down on Highway Nine at the Snoomish River Bridge, and they're doing all their survey and things like that. So what we started in 2015 on connecting Washington is finally starting to happen. So that's kind of good to see. Hopefully, we'll get two lanes all the way up or four lanes all the way up, and that will continue on our Highway Nine initiatives.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Peter Shagan?
Yes, it's always a couple of things. I guess it's always interesting to read in the Herald things about Lake Stevens, but as you all know, October 14th, we signed an ILA. And as I read the article, our community development director, Russ Wright, was able to negotiate Everett paying for 57% of the estimated $8 million project, which is the 91st Avenue extension. So hats off to Russ. I don't know how that came about, but according to the Herald, they're paying 57% of the $8 million cost. So anyway, guess what you read in the Herald doesn't always ring true. The second thing, we had an interesting last couple of days utility committee-wise with the sewer district discussions. I attended the board meeting on Thursday. There was a number of items before the Board of Directors that both the mayor and I and Gene, city administrator, wanted to have some more discussion on. It was a jam-packed agenda. And we were informed by one of the commissioners that we were not to have any part in those discussions, contrary to what I believe our interpretation of the assumption agreement states. So with that, I'd just like to highlight a couple of things that took place at the sewer district meeting. And one of those is they approved, right now, all the employees of the district are eligible for medical, dental, vision, and life insurance benefits. They approved granting that to the commissioners as well. Not all commissioners, I don't believe, will take, partake in that, but it's a hit to their budget of about $105,000. The second thing that took place was a large transfer of funds, which I, you know, I totally get to pay for 2C down here, the lift station. But again, these are activities that are taking place that the city feels that we should at least have a discussion on with the utility committee. And that hasn't happened. The third major item is they're reviewing their capital facility plan. And I, again, I totally empathize with them. We are dealing with the same situation, rising costs of providing infrastructure improvements. And they're having to revise their capital facility plan, in my opinion, rather dramatically. On Monday's, excuse me, on Thursday's discussion, there was a brief discussion about raising their monthly fee for service to about $107 a month. There was a fair amount of discussion that took place, and a special meeting was held yesterday, or yesterday, yeah, 4 o'clock. And now they're talking about increasing their monthly fee to about $120 a month. Added to the city utility tax, the city or the sewer bill will be about $127. Right now, we're about 103, I think. So again, that's what their proposal is. They did step back. They want to have a discussion with the utility committee about this before they do approve it, which is helpful. But nonetheless, I, you know, substantial adjustments are taking place. The city's dealing with it. The sewer district's dealing with it as far as costs increase. But again, from the mayor's, my standpoint, it, it would be nice to have a discussion about it prior to them enacting that. So that's what's taking place, just to inform the public. Not a lot of people participate in the meetings of the sewer district. But those are some of the things that are on the table. And I do want to emphasize the $120 rate would take effect January. It is not approved as of yet, but that is a proposal that they are discussing. And it'll probably be decided in the first part of November. So anyway, that's all I have. Great news for everyone.
Thank you. Councilmember Ewing?
A couple of things. So to piggyback on my Peter, Councilmember Peter Shagan, so Marysville, in case you didn't know, they pay $45 a month for their sewer fees. So significant cost difference for a significantly larger area that they're covering. So one of the things that I like about being on council and working with our staff is I had a citizen reach out recently about a stormwater detention issue. She reached out to me directly. I was able to forward it to our staff, our environmental program manager, is that correct? And I was blown away with the level of response. It was perfectly worded, included a before and after picture, and addressed all of the citizens' concerns. And I just found out that she recently reached out and thanked the city staff for the prompt response. Similarly, there was a safety issue on Lundine Parkway with the light repairs that we had addressed a couple of weeks ago. That citizen reached out to me directly and to thank me and the city staff for the work that they did in addressing that in a timely manner. If you'll recall, her daughter drives home at midnight, and that area stretch of roadway is extremely dark with all the trees that are along there. And so this, this week, it's been nice driving with lights on it. And I don't know who's responsible for the city, but over the storm over the weekend, there was an altar, rotted altar that fell over a sidewalk in part of Lundine Parkway. And it was repaired by afternoon on Monday. I'm not sure who was responsible for that, but I really appreciate the responsiveness of our city staff. And then with regard to the ILA, I believe, if I'm going to believe reported media, that the Everett City Council will be voting on the ILA on November 5th. And so it isn't a done deal on there, but that is a, would be a significant win for our economic development if we're able to secure that. So for those of us who have connections with, with Everett, if we can provide some positive, positive encouragement for that, that would be super helpful for our economic development viability in our city if we can make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hilt?
Thank you, Councilmember Peter Shagan, for sunlighting the rate increase and the other activities over there at the sewer district. I know you and I share a very similar perspective. I do need to leave a little bit after 7:00, so I will step out early.
Okay, Councilmember Donahue?
Yes, thank you. So on October 15th, I believe it was, it's been a little while now, I attended the Planning Commission meeting. The two big topics of discussion were proposed amendments to the currency code and the traffic impact fee code. And David, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe there will be a public hearing for the Plan Commission on November 5th? Getting nods. Kristy? Oh, I guess that's not right.
Thank you, Councilmember Chair, Kristy Schmidt, Planning Manager. That has been postponed. Staff has decided it is the best option. We discussed with the council at the work session that we'd be back before you with the options requested by council prior to going back to the Planning Commission. So the hearing has been put on hold until we get feedback from the city council.
Okay, thank you very much. So scratch that last part. And that's all I have.
Thank you. And I have nothing to report this week. I was on vacation all last week, but I'm back in town and ready to get to work.
All right, thank you. That moves us to mayor's business. So just really quick, Gene, anything you'd like to mention from the executive side, given that Mayor Gailey is out of town?
I don't have anything to, to mention. As you know, most of us are gone to the ICMA conference. And so we've been attending AI courses, budgeting courses, and it's been a good conference thus far.
All right, excellent. Thank you. Okay, moving along. We're on to 9A Sidewalk Maintenance Program Policy with Director Halverson. I don't know if he's back there.
Curtis, Aaron is also online.
Oh, okay, perfect. Take it away, Curtis.
Thank you. Good evening, Council. I'm Curtis Clifton, the Public Works Operations Manager. Aaron may speak to this towards the end if he's, sees fit. But just to give you some context as far as how the department responds to sidewalks, I wanted to give you a little bit of an overview of everything, not everything, but bulk of what they're responsible for. We have 252 miles of roadway, 138 miles of sidewalks, and 3,200 signs. And to answer your question, Councilmember Ewing, we also respond to down trees on Lundine Parkway. So it was our streets crew. So yeah, that's the, the bulk of what we have. Currently this year, we have, the streets crew in itself has completed 1,800 work orders, with 154 of those being specifically for sidewalks. So we are prioritizing. We know the significance of these issues, and we are addressing them as resources allow. They are on the top of our priority list. We have created a maintenance program, and we are being as proactive as we can. One of those ways is we have now broken the city up into quadrants, and the crew is spending roughly around two weeks at a time per quadrant. And that's addressing, as they go into the quadrant, the supervisor's looking ahead, and they're saying, okay, what do we have? We have, we have sidewalks, we have vegetation, we have power repairs. So we're trying to get as much done as a whole while we're in those, in those quadrants. Mainly, we are trying to address the sidewalk issue. How we address those is when they are reported to us, they come in via email, phone call, or they use the mobile app. Hopefully, they have attached all the associated documents that we request, photos, descriptions, a pin of the location. Our supervisor and lead will then go out, assess what the condition of it is, and then determine what needs to be done as far as one work order will be created. And how we address or mitigate the issue depends on the size of the offset of the sidewalk itself. So we base it off of a half inch to one inch. We'll routinely just paint the location. And then once we do that, we'll create a preventative maintenance work order for follow-up, whether it's to assess, has the condition gotten any worse? Or do we need to update the paint just to let the pedestrians know that that offset is there? One to three inches, we tend to paint it, and we will shim it with either a temporary asphalt berm or a permanent asphalt. Sometimes in the past, we have done the, the concrete grinding, but we have found that, as we've discussed previously, that that can compromise the panel, and it negates us being able to actually physically use our tools, which is the sidewalk sucker, to lift the panel, re-level the grade, and set the panel down. Once we grind that down, then we're kind of, we're out of options. We'll have to tear out and replace. Four inch plus, we'll shim just to mitigate the issue, and then we'll prioritize those and get them set for replacement. Now, a lot of these are reactive. We know we have a lot of offsets, but we don't know we don't know as a whole, you know, how bad is it really? We just know that there is quite a few. We have the Catherine Creek area that we were recently in. We went through and marked what we could find, and just in that neighborhood itself, we created, excuse me, 80-plus work orders just in that neighborhood alone. And those work orders were mainly, we painted it, we shimmled them, and we will prioritize those based off of the severity of the offsets, and we'll address them as needed. We weren't able to go in and, and lift any panels. It was just, we painted, we bermed, and created the preventative maintenance, or the reoccurring work order, excuse me, to come back and check on those issues. One of the other proactive approaches is we are in, working with the engineering group this year. We're going out this week for an RFP. We've identified 12 locations that equates to approximately 476 linear feet of sidewalk, which is roughly about 2,500 square feet, and four ADA ramps that we will replace this year. So we will continue, depending on how this budget process plays out. So we will continue, depending on how this budget process plays out, we will continue to keep that proactive approach. Long term, we're working with engineering group as we're updating our eds to make sure that any street trees, which this is the bulk of our issue with these sidewalks, is tree roots. I would say ninety-nine percent of them are tree related. Sometimes it's a subgrade, but it's a rarity. It's made by tree roots. So we're working with engineering to get our eds updated and to call out that any new street trees that are installed, whether it's new development or just a replanting, that we are installing some form of root barrier to mitigate these issues. So the roots will go down as opposed to out causing these issues. With that, unless Director Halverson has anything to add, I would ask if council has any questions.
Okay. Any questions for Curtis or Director Halverson?
I do. So first, thank you. That's outstanding. I just want to compliment Director Halverson and our council leadership. So I brought the concern, I heard the concerns from community members, I brought it to our council leadership. They were able to bring it to city staff, they were able to collaborate and get this. Last week, Director Halverson checked in and said, hey, is this, he sent me emails, said, hey, is this what you were looking for? And I said, yeah, it was outstanding. And he said, I'm going to be presenting a report for council on the twenty-eighth. So I think this represents the best of what city government offers. And for me, it's not only what's done, but how it's done, the attitude with which it's done. And so that positivity with the response, not only the facing the council, but also the community, just makes it a really outstanding opportunity to provide excellent service to our community. And this is where I want input from the council because it's a budgetary issue, and it's essentially a policy issue. And you called out, so one to three employees to be able to provide better sidewalk maintenance, I guess, for lack of better. So if we were to add a position or two or whatever, what would the source of that that revenue for those positions be? And that's, if you don't know, that's totally fine. But I guess the other thing I'd want to see is what could we do with those positions to quantify that? If we hired one employee, what would that look like in terms of what we're able to accomplish? Would we hire two? Is there a better return on investment if we have two versus one? Those are some things that I've been thinking about because I would like to see the best return, because I personally walked over a hundred of those hundred thirty-eight miles in the last several months, sometimes many times, and I see the need that's there, but I also see hundreds of people making use of our sidewalks, and I really want to make sure that our city continues to be walkable.
Thank you.
Right. To, I don't have the answer to the revenue question. In the addition to the two employees, as far as what it would benefit, these panel replacements, if done in-house, are just, they're very labor extensive as far as the amount of people. Now, if we're in the middle of a neighborhood, we could get away with three, four employees doing a panel replacement, say. Well, that's where we're taking the existing panel, as long as the integrity of the structure is sound. Removing it, cutting out the roots, regrading this upgrade, three to four. That would change by two, depending on the traffic situation. So if we're on a more heavily traveled road, now you're talking about traffic control, flaggers. So it, these panel replacements chew up a lot of resources, depending on where they're at. I mean, we have a crew of six, so at a bare minimum, we're using half of them already just to address the sidewalk issues while maintaining everything else that we have. If it is more involved, we're essentially throwing our entire crew at this issue for a couple of weeks at a time, if that's all we're addressing is just sidewalks. Now everything else is going by the wayside. A prime example would be in the springtime, you know, vegetation takes off, as we all know. We end up having site distance issues, and it's a challenging balancing act to address what we know is a very important issue. And I do agree with you as far as making the city as walkable and safe as possible while maintaining all the other infrastructure that we have.
Can I speak to that? I'm sorry, Councilmember Ewing, I stepped on you there. I think that we can, we can take a look at that. And so the funding would come from the street fund, which is a transfer from property taxes. As you all know, we're evaluating alternatives to balance the budget. And one of the ways that that we're considering doing that is reducing the allocation to the streets fund. So what I can do is provide the information and what it would take to add an employee or maybe an employee in seasonal, or come up with an approach to really be more proactive and aggressive and report back. So give us a few weeks and we'll provide that information.
Thank you. I guess I would like to gauge the council's appetite, because I don't want to be a one-man band. It takes at least four votes to make something like that happen. But I know Councilmember Shipman has been really open and vocal about sidewalks and walkability. So anyone else that wants to weigh in? And I'd appreciate hearing something.
I actually have a question. Correct me if I'm wrong. I remember in the past, the mayor discussing with future growth and, you know, new development, that their trees will be placed in like a sleeve to prevent this from happening in the future. Because I think addressing what's going on now is very important. People trip, sidewalks aren't soft to land on. But, you know, how do we prevent this in the future? And so if I remember correctly, Mayor Gailey was saying for future development, they're going to be required to put like sleeves on the roots of their trees. Is that correct?
Yes.
That's, that's what's called a root barrier. So that sleeve present, prevents, excuse me, the tree roots to grow out towards the sidewalk. It sends them down as opposed to out. So they are, they do work. Ninety-first project, all those new street trees, we implemented that process, and they're all in there.
Thank you.
Councilmember Shipman, really quickly, I want to address it. It's really hard to be on Zoom sometimes. But anyway, we do require root barrier already, and we're inspecting it and making sure it's going in. A lot of these old plats, like Catherine Creek, didn't have root barrier. And so now we're suffering ten years later. Current plats require it. We're inspecting it, making sure it happens, and we're adding to it with our new eds update, making sure that it's deep enough and the right type of material for long-term prevention.
I see, I see Councilor George Ed has her hand up.
Thank you. I appreciate it and really appreciate the conversation and the presentation. I just wanted to respond to Councilmember Ewing's question about just getting feedback from the rest of the council around adding staff. I just want to make sure we're not making that decision in a vacuum, that we're really looking at the budget as a whole and the staffing for the city as a whole. I also agree that walkability and safety is extremely important, along with other extremely important things that we have currently happening in our city. So just want to look at the big picture versus making a decision about one department. Thanks.
I would agree with what Councilmember George Ed just said, and tack on that, you know, if, when Director Halverson and his staff come back with policy level issues, you know, where this funding might come from, movement of funds between the different funds. You know, I'm happy to hear that and consider all options, because I agree sidewalks are walkably important. But, you know, when it comes down to the day-to-day of where that money will be spent, which departments will receive new headcount, I think that might fall more on the executive side of things. So I personally would be anxious to hear what Director Halverson comes back with.
And I would like to see the difference, if possible, in your report. What's this going to cost our city as far as staff-wise, which translates into dollars? And what would it cost to contract it out? Right? And so, and see if one's more affordable than the other, if one makes more sense than the other. Because with city employees, we don't just have wages and hours and a lack of personnel, right? So we also have benefits and all those things that get rolled into a cost that maybe aren't as as obvious to someone from the outside looking in. But as a small business owner, I can tell you, hiring my employees to do something oftentimes is more expensive than contracting out. And so I would like to see a comparison, because it doesn't sound like our city employees have a lack of work. So if we were to contract out, it doesn't sound like it's going to take work from anybody. And if it makes more financial sense, then that might be something we should consider.
Any, please, go ahead.
Well, I agree with everything that's been said. I mean, I definitely agree with Angie George Ed saying that we need to look at a holistic, take a holistic view of everything because of the budget. And so, you know, we're also talking about public safety. Now sidewalks are part of the public safety, as far as I'm concerned. The public safety aspect of having more police officers and those kinds of things that definitely come out of the general fund need to be looked at, too. So a holistic approach to doing this is what is the best route for the council and the executive staff.
Councilmembers Hilt or Peter Shagan, anything to add before we move on?
No, you asked the question, where is the money coming from? I'd like to know that, too. We just have so many competing needs, and none of these are fallacious. They're all important, but we, we just can't look at sidewalks. We have to look at all our, all our departments and needs.
Yeah, I guess I would comment that sidewalks are part of the road network, and that needs to be looked at from a safety standpoint, wheelchair ramps, things of that sort, failing curbs, not just sidewalks, making sure we have proper drainage and so forth, that, you know, don't affect the sidewalks. So I would, I don't know as though, you know, targeting sidewalks in general, while it's a noble goal, I, you know, I think from a universal standpoint, you know, sidewalks are a component of the transportation network. And we're, you know, we're putting out fires as we go right now. So sometimes the issues of wheelchair ramps and curbs and so forth take precedent. I like the approach that they, you know, kind of tiered things as to the triage, I guess, of sidewalks. And I think that obviously needs to continue. I don't know as though, you know, focusing a tiger team or something like that just on sidewalks is the appropriate appropriate way to go with our budget constraints as they are. So I guess I would add maybe, in regards to contracting out, maybe Mr. Clifton could answer, do we have union issues with that type of activity? No, actually, at this point, the twelve locations that I mentioned that we'll be contracting out this year, the streets crew selected these based off of current work orders that we have outstanding right now. So not that I'm aware of. Okay, great.
Yeah, Councilmember Peter Shagan, let me weigh in really, I'll be brief. We negotiated in the ability to contract out for this work, as long as we provide notice to the union. And we've done that in the past successfully with janitorial services with sidewalks. And so we would repeat that behavior each year.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, anything else? Going once, going twice? All right. Thank you, Curtis and Aaron, for the great report and for being so responsive to council questions. I appreciate that. Okay, and then that brings us on to our second department report, which I apologize, I was not able to write down because I don't have a pen, so.
Good evening, council. As you know, we have two, the next two weeks, we have our Tuesday night council meetings that are going to be canceled, one for the fourth, which is election night, and one for Veterans Day, which is on the eleventh. And so we're looking to add a special meeting potentially next week, and we sent out a poll. I appreciate you guys for filling that out. We wanted to come back and have a discussion about, you know, what day would be the most viable. And looking at the poll results, it seemed like Wednesday after election night, so Wednesday, the fifth, was going to work best. We also wanted to ask you about Thursday, because there is a planning commission meeting on Wednesday, so we would need to meet potentially a little later. So we'd like to have a discussion with you about if either of those days would be viable. I know Barb is needing some more time in order to prepare for the upcoming public hearings. We want to give her as much time as possible because this meeting would be specific to budget.
Are you saying Thursday, the sixth?
Yes, sorry, Thursday, the sixth.
I would not be available that day because of Community Transit Board of Directors meeting. Although I would miss the, I would miss that before I missed, like, Stevens City Council meeting, but be able to do both.
And I want to say, I think we, we put out whether council wanted to do the meeting next week or the week after. The problem with doing the meeting the week after is that gives me about two days to put together the public hearing for the next week. So that's not really feasible if we want to actually have another budget discussion before public hearings. The other option is to go to public hearing and hash it out there.
I'm not available on the fifth. On the fifth, Wednesday, the fifth. Pardon?
Could you do the sixth?
Yeah, I believe so, yes.
Angie?
Just wanted to say I can do either the fifth or the sixth. I am not at all available the following week.
Yeah, the following week had very little interest. So, and like Barb said, there's a time constraint. So we kind of narrowed in on those two days next week.
So if I could ask the council, I know you have a conflict, potentially Councilmember Dotree, is the rest of you available the sixth?
I'm questionable on the sixth.
I can take care of my conflict a different way.
Okay.
And I would be late to the meeting on the sixth. And it depends on traffic, so.
Okay.
Would there be a more preferred start time, like six thirty on the sixth?
We're getting older, so I think earlier is better.
I agree with that.
I mean, I get up at four thirty, so I mean, I appreciate getting to, you know, getting done earlier.
Yeah, I mean, I think the sixth would be good in that we wouldn't have the conflicting planning commission meeting also going on. We'd have as much time as you need that night. So. Sorry, but six o'clock on the sixth?
That works. Thank you. Appreciate this.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry, Kim. He's trying to find the day. Oh, and do you need to let us know?
Yeah, I'll get back to you.
Okay. Do you want us to wait to get that split?
If everyone else is available, you guys can go ahead and schedule that, and I'll just make arrangements one way or another.
Okay, or maybe you can be virtual.
Yeah, let me look into it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda. So keeping in mind that we have moved item F off to an action item, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
I would like to make an amendment to the October fourteenth minutes.
Okay.
And that is on page twenty-four. Department reports Chapel Hill update, since it was reported the site plan review has been extended. The feasibility study has been extended, not the site plan review.
That was a clerk error, not being in the planning department. I will correct that. Thank you.
Okay. Any other changes, amendments, comments? Okay, so with the amendments to the consent agenda in mind, can I please get a motion to approve? All right.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, excellent. Thank you. So that brings us now to our new action item section. I will turn over to Shannon.
Yeah, good evening. Thank you. Shannon Front, Environmental Programs Manager. Tonight, we brought to a contract with a consultant, Shannon and Wilson. This contract is for the design of the Lower Stevens Creek Channel realignment north of Hartford. So that takes the existing outlet channel that runs parallel to Hartford, and it moves it on the north side of Hartford with crossing close to the fire station, and then upgrading the existing crossing at Hartford and Catherine Creek. This, this contract was originally on the consent agenda. Since we put it on the agenda, there's been a couple modifications to the contract itself. The first modification that we had, that I believe that you saw in the emailed copy that Kelly sent out, was additional language to sections Roman numeral three dot seven dot C and D. This included insurance provisions for the consultant to use a drone for survey purposes. And the modification that's in your packet today that you're seeing, that's in front of you, is there was a word that the consultant requested we remove from the contract in the indemnity section, Roman numeral three dot six. And based on recommendation from our legal counsel, we have re-added that word back in. This meets our legal counsel's requirements. And then also, I just wanted to bring to your attention that in this most recent copy, the term for the contract is December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, and the total payment of eight hundred and fifty-three thousand, two hundred and four and eighty cents. That was not in the contract that was emailed to you. So I apologize for all the confusion, but I'm really excited about this project. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right, any questions from council? Okay, not hearing any. So being as an- Okay, not hearing any. So being as an action item, you are looking for approval or?
A motion to authorize mayor to sign this. Yes, please.
Okay. Can I get a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the contract?
So moved. Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, here you are.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to item eleven, the public hearing. So got my handy cheat sheet here. So we've got a public hearing on the adoption of resolution two zero two five dash one-one. The, how are we pronouncing this name? Fagerly? Am I saying that right? Yes. The Fagerly West sixty percent annexation petition. So I will go ahead and call the hearing open and turn it over to Jill for a presentation.
Thank you, Councilmember Donahue. Good evening, council. Jill Needham here, planner with the City of Lake Stevens. So okay. All right. So I am back tonight with the sixty percent resolution. This accepts the sixty percent annexation petition for this annexation proposal. So just for a little bit of background on this project, so on August twenty-sixth, council passed the resolution to accept the ten percent petition. Since then, council, or the applicant has submitted the sixty percent petition that you are reviewing today. We have received confirmation from St. Homish County that they have validated the sixty percent petition on October twenty-first. And then just for a little bit of background on this, on this project, I know I showed this slide last time. But this, they are using the direct petition method for annexation. We have now received signatures from sixty percent of the valuation, since this is only one property, that's only one homeowner. The property is about three point one acres in size, and it's located just south of Twentieth Street in the southeast corner of the city. And the current land use designation is medium density residential, and those current zonings are eight dash twelve. That's really similar to the Passad Air Development that kind of surrounds it. The applicant is not requesting any modifications to either the land use designation or the zoning for this one. Okay, I know I showed this slide last time, so I'll whip through this one really quick. This is just an overview of the process. So the process starts when a petition is submitted containing the signatures of owners representing at least ten percent of the property value within the proposed annexation area. So council reviewed that. They passed the resolution of intent on August twenty-sixth. And since then, the property owner has signed the required sixty percent petition and submitted that to the city. So now we find ourselves here at step four, where a council holds a public hearing and votes to pass the resolution to accept the sixty percent petition. And so after that, we'll send it off to the boundary review board for review, and then council will then have the opportunity to adopt the final annexation ordinance as kind of the last step in the process. So after the public hearing is open, the staff recommendation is to approve resolution twenty-five dash one-one to accept the sixty percent annexation petition and begin the process with the boundary review board. It also adopts the existing comprehensive plan and land use and zoning pre-designations without any modification. So with that, are there any questions for the staff?
Any questions?
Has the applicant attempted to secure more properties? Not secure, but to petition more properties and gain those signatures to expand these boundaries?
Yes, it's my understanding that they have spoken with the property owners to the west of the site, and they were unsuccessful.
Thank you.
What is the amount of debt the county has bonded on that property? Do you know?
That's a great question. I don't know that off the top of my head. Barb, did you know?
Imagine it's not much for one parcel, but I didn't see it anywhere. So just curious.
Any other questions? Okay, then I will go ahead and open up for public comment, just keeping in mind, it's public comment related to this particular public hearing. And you will have your three minutes. So with that, anybody online?
I don't see anybody, but again, if you're online on our Zoom meeting, if you can raise your digital hand, I can bring you into this public hearing to make a three-minute comment.
Okay. Not having anybody online, anybody in the audience that would like to offer public? Oh, I see, we got to take her. Good. Perfect. If you could state your name and get your three minutes.
Ryan Larson with Lampro Group, the applicant's representative. And yes, we have contacted the three property, actually two property owners to the west of the site, and they were not that interested in doing it at this point in time. And then we also did look at the Passad Air project as well to the south, and there's multiple issues if we were to attempt to do that. The past annexation we did similar to that of the zoning designation, as well as the recordings on the face of the final plat, really puts a pickle in trying to get those folks to annex with us as well. So after reviewing that and had our attorney look at it, we decided not to pursue further with the Passad Air folks to the south. So.
Is there not a status of non-protest on those properties?
There is, but it's not straightforward. It would probably end up in an appeal and probably go to, the last one we did ended up in appeal and took about a year and a half to do. So.
I'm assuming you're running a concurrent annexation to the sewer district on this property also?
I believe it's already annexed, if I remember correctly.
That's just a standalone with the sewer district?
Correct.
All right. Any further comment? Thank you very much. Anybody else that would like to offer public comment? Okay, not seeing anybody. I'll go ahead and close the public comment portion of the hearing. Any further comments from staff? By staff, I mean you, Jill.
No.
All right, thank you. Any further questions from council, staff? All right. Any discussion or deliberation on this with council? Waiting. Gary's flipping through stuff. I just want to make sure.
I suggest that we move forward with this.
Okay, perfect. With that, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. And then we are looking for a motion for adoption of the resolution. Is that correct? Okay, could I please get a motion for the adoption of resolution two zero two five dash one-one, the Fagerly West sixty percent annexation petition?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The motion passes. And with that, that is the last item on our agenda. So. Yeah, with that, could I, yeah, we still got Councilmember Hill here. So Councilmember Hill, would you, there we go. Can I get a second, please? All right. I'll just go ahead and ask. All those in favor? All right. Meeting is adjourned.